Good morning. Today is the twenty-third day of September. And the time is nine o'clock. The Board of Commissioners is in session. Commissioner Daley and myself are present. Commissioner Davidson is absent. Could you identify yourself, start over here?
Yeah, Department of Operations.
Tim Klein, Treasurer's Office.
Katie Riley, Treasurer's Office.
Jeremy Shabbitt, Paramedics.
John Blake, Paramedics.
Jeremiah Wickham, Paramedics.
Saul Siler, Attorney General.
Bob Purk, Attorney General.
Brad Green, Prosecutor's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
IT guy.
Heath is working for Clerk's Office.
All right.
All right, ma'am clerk, are there any changes to the agenda? All right, ma'am clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are. There are.
Okay. Okay. I'll accept the motion. I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman and I move that we remove item Roman numeral six, Chairman and I move that we remove item Roman numeral six, number seven, A, quick claim D for consideration at this time. number seven, A, quick claim D for consideration at this time. Remove it from the agenda for consideration. Remove it from the agenda for consideration.
It's seven A, right? It's seven A, right?
Seven A. Seven A.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Okay. Okay. Need to add anything to the agenda? Need to add anything to the agenda? Nope. Okay. Nope. Okay. Well, first up is the Volunteer Board. Well, first up is the Volunteer Board. We have a couple of people to be reappointed. We have a couple of people to be reappointed. Chuck Berthrees to the Parks and Open Space Trails Advisory, Chuck Berthrees to the Parks and Open Space Trails Advisory, term to expire nine thirty, term to expire nine-thirty, and a reappointment of Stephen O'Meara as the Chairperson of the Emergency Communication Planning Committee, and a reappointment of Stephen O'Meara as the Chairperson of the Emergency Communication Planning Committee, term to expire nine thirty twenty-six. term to expire nine-thirty-twenty-six. Okay. Okay. Any question or discussion on the reappointments? Any question or discussion on the reappointments?
None of them are here to object to being appointed. None of them are here to object to being appointed.
I guess not, so they're gonna be voluntold. All right. I guess not, so they're gonna be voluntold. All right. All right, I'll accept the motion. All right, I'll accept the motion.
Chairman and I move to reappoint Chuck Berthrees Chairman and I move to reappoint Chuck Berthrees and reappoint Stephen O'Meara to the position, the advisory boards, as listed on the agenda. and reappoint Stephen O'Meara to the position, the advisory boards, as listed on the agenda.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Okay, I'll second the motion. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have some unfinished business. I'll accept the motion to remove the unfinished business from the, from the table. Motion carries. Okay, now we have some unfinished business. I'll accept the motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration. I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Aye. Motion carries. Aye. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Final ranking and award recommendation for RFP two-five-zero-seven-three. Final ranking and award recommendation for RFP two-five-zero-seven-three.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley, the evaluation team has completed the initial evaluation of RFP two-five-zero-seven-three,
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley, the evaluation team has completed the initial evaluation of RFP two-five-zero-seven-three,
the Ada County Armored Car Services Project.
the Ada County Armored Car Services Project.
But they are in the process of conducting interviews with the top three proposers,
But they are in the process of conducting interviews with the top three proposers,
and therefore, we would like to request to retable the final rankings and award recommendation
and therefore, we would like to request to retable the final rankings and award recommendation
to the September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five Open Business Meeting.
to the September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five Open Business Meeting.
Okay, any questions? Okay, any questions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion. Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to table RFP two-five-zero-seven-three to the nine thirty, twenty-twenty-five OBM. I move to table RFP two-five-zero-seven-three to the nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-five OBM.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have an agreement that was tabled last week due today. Okay, now we have an agreement that was tabled last week due today. It's an agreement between Ada County and Valley Regional Transit, producing services contributions. It's an agreement between Ada County and Valley Regional Transit, producing services contributions. Any questions or discussion on this agreement? Any questions or discussion on this agreement? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve it. Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve it.
I move to approve Agreement three-one-zero-zero-one as listed on the agenda. I move to approve Agreement three-one-zero-zero-one as listed on the agenda.
Second the motion. Second the motion. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Motion carries. All right. Okay, now we get into new business. Okay, now we get into new business. I'll open the public hearing on I'll open the public hearing on Resolution number three-one-three-one, a resolution for conveyance of a two thousand seventeen Chevrolet Tahoe Resolution number three-one-three-one, a resolution for conveyance of a two thousand seventeen Chevrolet Tahoe from Ada County to the Sheriff's Office of the City of Nampa, Boise, City of Nampa Police Department. from Ada County to the Sheriff's Office of the City of Nampa, Boise, City of Nampa Police Department. Okay. Okay. Any questions or discussion on the resolution? Any questions or discussion on the resolution? Or donating something to the city, a police vehicle to the City of Nampa? Or donating something to the city, a police vehicle to the City of Nampa?
Just a note to the people, we are helping other people as we can throughout not only Ada County but the city of Idaho. Just, just a note to the people, we are helping other people as we can throughout not only Ada County but the city of Idaho.
That's right. That's right. Okay, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution number three-one-three-one. Okay, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution number three-one-three-one.
I move to approve Resolution three-one-three-one as listed on the agenda. I move to approve Resolution three-one-three-one as listed on the agenda.
Okay, I'll Okay, I'll any, any more discussion on the motion? Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Okay, we have the Clerk's Office. Okay, we have the Clerk's Office. Want to designate some polling places. Are you sure? Want to designate some polling places. Are you sure?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Let me hand it over to our Director Saul Siler, but before I do, I thought it would be
Let me hand it over to our Director Saul Siler, but before I do, I thought it would be a really good opportunity for the listeners and the Ada County citizens to know
a really good opportunity for the listeners and the Ada County citizens to know how much work really happens behind the scenes
how much work really happens behind the scenes to get these polling locations stood up,
to get these polling locations stood up, codified, ADA compliant.
codified, ADA compliant.
We're gonna stand up one hundred and thirty-two polling locations. This election's sneaking up on us pretty quickly.
We're gonna stand up one hundred and thirty-two polling locations. This election's sneaking up on us pretty quickly. Eight early voting locations. Ada County citizens have it pretty convenient here, so I just wanted to give a shout out to the team, but
Eight early voting locations. Ada County citizens have it pretty convenient here, so I just wanted to give a shout out to the team, but Saul, I'm still here, Thunder.
Saul, I'm still here, Thunder.
Okay, better call Saul. Okay, better call Saul.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioner Daley. Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioner Daley. We do have one hundred and thirty-two polling locations for this. We do have one hundred and thirty-two polling locations for this. Fifty-three of those will be dual locations, where housing more than one precinct. Fifty-three of those will be dual locations, where housing more than one precinct. We have one hundred and eighty-nine precincts active in this election, so nearly a full deployment out of one ninety-seven. We have one hundred and eighty-nine precincts active in this election, so nearly a full deployment out of one ninety-seven. This is a complicated election for us, with three hundred and fifty-three ballot styles, given the consolidated nature of it. This is a complicated election for us, with three hundred and fifty-three ballot styles, given the consolidated nature of it. A lot of different taxing districts active in this go around, so. A lot of different taxing districts active in this go around, so. But we're very confident in these polling locations. But we're very confident in these polling locations. We're working to make sure we identify the best ones throughout the county We're working to make sure we identify the best ones throughout the county for convenience of the citizens, for convenience of the citizens, and then, as Heath said, we do requirements and things along those lines. and then, as Heath said, we do requirements and things along those lines.
Okay. Okay.
So I believe a motion has been submitted for your consideration along with the listed polling locations. So I believe a motion has been submitted for your consideration along with the listed polling locations.
All right. All right. Well, I'll accept the motion then. Well, I'll accept the motion then.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of questions. Mr. Chairman, just a couple of questions. Sure. Sure. So how many people, volunteers, or I guess paid to? So how, how many people, volunteers, or I guess paid to? People are required to man each polling place? People are required to man each polling place?
So it'll depend. Great question, Commissioner. So it'll depend. Great question, Commissioner. It will depend on whether or not it's a dual precinct or a single precinct. It will depend on whether or not it's a dual precinct or a single precinct. In a location or election of this size, we'll have a Chief Judge, Assistant Chief Judge, In a location or election of this size, we'll have a Chief Judge, Assistant Chief Judge, and three poll workers in a typical polling location. and three poll workers in a typical polling location. Any dueling or dual location will have six. Any dueling or dual location will have six. So Chief Judge, Assistant Chief Judge, and then four poll workers in those locations. So Chief Judge, Assistant Chief Judge, and then four poll workers in those locations.
And do we have, we have people to fill all those? And, and do we have, we have people to fill all those?
Yes, presently, we have all our Chief Judges and Assistant Chief Judges filled, Yes, presently, we have all our Chief Judges and Assistant Chief Judges filled, and we're just rounding out our poll worker list as of right now. We start training next week, actually. and we're just rounding out our poll worker list as of right now. We start training next week, actually.
So it's always, again, back to what Heath was saying. So it's always, again back to what Heath was saying. We need people to step up and do that, and so we're thankful that people have done that in the community, We need people to step up and do that, and so we're thankful that people have done that in the community, because it's an important part of our process. because it's an important part of our process. Most people don't realize that they just go to the election and people are there, Most people don't realize that we just go to the election and people are there, but but it's a long process to get people there and manning. it's a long process to get people there and manning. How many, how many locations do we have that they can actually print the ballots? What do they call it? How many, how many locations do we have that they can actually print the ballots? What do they call it?
So we'll be over half of our precincts on ballot on demand. So we'll be over half of our precincts on ballot on demand. Our goal is to run all precincts ballot on demand in May of twenty-twenty-six for the primary election. Our goal is to run all precincts ballot on demand in May of twenty-twenty-six for the primary election. The reason behind that target in particular is because The reason behind that target in particular is because anytime you're looking at, say, five different party, potential party ballots, anytime you're looking at, say, five different party, potential party ballots, there's a lot of selection variety, obviously, that voters can choose from depending on their party affiliation and things along those lines. there's a lot of selection variety, obviously, that voters can choose from depending on their party affiliation and things along those lines. So that, that election is very critical to ensure that everyone receives, you know, the proper ballot, So that election is very critical to ensure that everyone receives, you know, the proper ballot, given their status of party affiliation. given their status of party affiliation. So we are running in this election approximately one hundred and ten precincts as ballot on demand, So we are running in this election approximately one hundred and ten precincts as ballot on demand, and we hope to have all one ninety-seven for May of twenty-twenty-six. and we hope to have all one ninety-seven for May of twenty-twenty-six.
And that has been very carefully monitored. And that has been very carefully monitored. It's a careful process. You don't just print things out. It, it's a careful process. You don't just print things out.[856.41]
Yes. Great question, Commissioner. We have very deliberately expanded this process. We first started working on ballot on demand about two years ago, and we've slowly tested the printers and the capabilities and connections, and we're to the point where we feel confident that we can actually deploy this at a full scale. To this day, we still actually print paper packet ballots. In the case that we had any unforeseen issue with technology, we actually always do have paper ballots available so that we can still run the election without any interruption should something happen.
Yeah, that's my last question.
All paper ballots are all ballot on demand or paper ballots as well, aren't they?
Correct.
So you're already talking pre-printed ballots.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we still have pre-printed ballots. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Chairman.
Because, yeah, I just don't want to have anybody not understand that.
Yes, correct.
They're all paper ballots.
Yes.
Then, Mr. Chairman, just the last, again, for the public to understand. We do have ballot verifier that they get after the election's over. Every one of those ballots will be able to be visually looked at by the public.
That is correct. Yeah, every ballot cast, because they are anonymous, we were able to post those images and also what's called the cast vote record online, which is actually how a machine read that ballot to ensure that not only was that ballot cast, but it was read correctly by our machines. And that is available typically about two, we've got it down to about two to three weeks after an election, those all become available to the public.
Oh, and it should be noted, go ahead. Well, it should be noted that on the ballot verifier, it is completely anonymous unless you write your name on the ballot.
Very true.
And then people could know, but I doubt if people are writing their name on a ballot. But that is something that people ask when you say, oh, we got ballot verifier, and you look at every ballot. You mean, it's not anonymous, it's absolutely anonymous unless you write your name on the ballot. There's no reason to do that.
And we have even put that into the instructions on the ballot, notifying voters that it is a public record. So hopefully, I don't know that they always read the instructions, but hopefully, if they do, they're made aware of that.
Well, again, back to what Heath said, thank you all, because I just want to make sure the public understood. One, it is very clear, it's very monitored, so that our election process in Ada County is very good. Thank you.
Well, and it's a very complicated thing to deploy. I mean, it's like a big, a big, it's like a big wedding.
It's a giant event planning operation.
It's a big event planning operation, so thank you. All right.
So I'm ready for a motion.
Ah, well, I'm ready for a motion. Do you have a motion?
Pursuant to Idaho Code thirty-four dash three-oh-two, I move to designate the polling places for the November fourth, twenty-twenty-five consolidated election as presented by the clerk. And that's, that'll be available for people to look at.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any more discussion? You do have that list ready to go. Okay, good enough. You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. You got your ballot designated, your polling places designated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Tell your staff we appreciate the work that they did to get all this deployed.
I will relay that to them.
Is your office gonna be pretty up and running?
We're almost there.
Well, let us know. We'd like to come out and take a look at it.
We are looking forward to that opportunity.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving along. Still in the Clerk's Office, we have Peddler and Solicitor's License. And we have some catering permits. And new license and license transfer. I will accept a motion on the Peddler and Solicitor's License.
I move to approve the Peddler's and Solicitor's License as listed on the agenda.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On number three, we've got the Peddler Solicitor's License. Forgive me for this name, but Zwilliski Mark Sun Peak Logistics.
Right.
We're recommending a denial on this due to the
That's right.
the drug background that was determined through the research process.
Yep.
Not compliant per statute.
Yep. So the motion we should deny.
Why change the motion?
The motion we should deny, yes. And I'll second the motion to deny. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have catering permits and a new license and license transfer. I'll accept a motion on the catering permits and license transfer and new license.
I move to approve the catering permits seventeen, number seventeen as listed on the agenda, the new license and the license transfer as listed on the agenda.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do you have anything else from the Clerk's Office?
No, sir. Thanks for your support on the polling locations.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. Good enough. Okay, now we have the Claims Journal. I'll accept the motion on the Claims Journal.
I move to authorize payment of the Claims Journal dated September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. We have Personnel Actions. One automatic grade step progression. I'll accept the motion on that Personnel Action.
I move to approve your Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Now we got the Treasurer's Office. We have anyone here from the Treasurer's Office? Go ahead.
Chairman, Commissioner Daley. Today, we just have on the agenda the setting of the minimum bids for the four tax-deep delinquencies for twenty-twenty-one.
Okay. Don't I see that on the agenda? Any questions?
That's the motion, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve, to set the minimum bid requirements for the parcels identified on the agenda and direct the Treasurer to offer parcels at public auction at their proposed minimum amounts.
Okay. I'll second the motion. Is there any further discussion?
Just, they are listed on the agenda.
Listed on the agenda, yep.
So if somebody's interested.
Okay, I'll, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Now, the approval of minutes. I'll accept the motion on the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the Open Business Meeting on nine-nine twenty-twenty-five and the public hearing on nine-ten twenty-twenty-five, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we have operations. We have change order number one, Expo Idaho South Parking Lot Lighting Circuit Replacement Project, a decrease of sixty-nine thousand dollars. We're down with that project, huh?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that project is completed. Just we turn back to the motion.
All right. Great. I'll accept the motion.
Just a note, another job well done by the staff, sixty-nine thousand dollars left.
Yep.
So I move to approve change order number one to Agreement three-zero-five-two-six as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the, second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. We have change order number one, Star EMS HVAC Replacement Agreement Number three-zero-nine-five-three, a decrease of fifteen thousand. I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve change order number one to Agreement Number three-zero-nine-five-three as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now we have three agreements from the at Barbara Park and Education and Event Center. I'll accept the motion on those three agreements.
I move to approve the three agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Now we have forty agreements. Most of these are renewal agreements. Any questions or discussion on any of the forty agreements that we have to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I have just, well, they're all listed on the agenda, but just to note a couple of, two or three of them. Four and five are senior citizen centers in Star and Kuna, which I think we've made contributions to those.
Yep.
The general fund, number eleven. Visually impaired and blind vending machines, which I think is important for that segment of our society, that we contribute to that. Number twelve. Kuna Rural Fire Meets, that's a communications dispatch, that's an example of the kind of things we cooperate with our community on as well. Number fifteen, Solid Waste, Harden, we already approved that agreement in terms of the rates for Harden, and this is just the renewal of the, of that agreement.
Well, they're asking for a slight increase.
Two-point-four on this, I'm sorry.
Two-point-four percent, yes.
Which is small, compared to some of the other jurisdictions in the county. And then, let's see, I just had a couple more that I wanted to note. On the, we have three agreements for our Victim Service Center with Terry Riley and with Southwest Area Aging and with the Children's Advocacy Network. Our victim center is a very, again, a very important part of our community and
Yeah, and they're license agreements, because they don't pay any rent on the property
Correct.
unless they go outside of what they're supposed to do there, so that's good. Anything else?
Are we gonna do the miscellaneous ones separate?
Yeah. We're gonna, we have, yeah, just the forty agreements as listed on the agenda.
Right. So I move to approve the forty agreements as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have Indigent Services Item, Weekly Indigent Items.
I move to approve the Weekly Indigent Items for today's date, September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have a miscellaneous, a discussion regarding the move of fiscal year twenty-twenty-five funds from Master Facilities Fund to Construction Funds. Do you have any discussion on that?
Well, this is, this is, we have from, well, I don't know, Heath might want to explain this, but my explanation would be fund balance, we have used some of that from last year from the, and it's in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. It's in Master Facilities, we have to take action on that, either let it go back into fund balance or move it into precise construction funds.
No construction funds.
This, this motion would move it six million dollars into the construct, into the jail fund and four million dollars into the
Admin.
admin fund. And this is, again, for those listening, it's no budget change, it's not an increase to our budget, it's just moving funds within the budget, so.
Well, and it designates it, because once we're moving into these particular funds, they have to be spent for that purpose, the jail and for a potential admin building.
Correct.
That's what it does, it reserves the funds. Okay.
So I move that we for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five funds, take them from the National Master Facilities Funds into dedicated construction funds as we just talked about.
Six million into, into the jail fund and four million into the admin fund.
Correct.
Is that clear?
Correct, sir.
Okay. I'll second.
Do you have any other comments?
No, well explained, thank you.
Okay, I'll second the motion, and I'll call for a question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, any other business needs to be brought for the Board? Okay, we'll be adjourned. Thank you. We're on the record. Good morning. Today is the twenty-third day of September. Uh, the time is nine twenty-five. Uh, the Board is in session acting as the Board of Ada County Emergency Medical Services District. Mr. Daly and myself are present. Mr. Davidson is absent. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not.
Okay, identify yourself for the record.
Jeremy Chabot, paramedics.
Jeremiah Wickham, paramedics.
John Blake, paramedics.
Sean Ray, paramedics.
And?
Elizabeth Duncan, communications.
And we have IT guy. Okay. The first item on the, on the, uh, agenda is recognition of an employee. Would you read the, the, uh, recognition?
He's smiling. Jeremiah Wickham is a fixture at Ada County Paramedics. He's quick to smile, is ridiculously positive, and is firmly committed to the well-being of those around him. Jeremiah brings different sorts of insight to group discussions and problem solving. His perspect, perspective is useful and welcome as we move a growing department forward. Jeremiah is highly regarded and well-respected by our department and by our partner agencies. He's positively influenced and taught countless medics and EMTs. In his role as Field Captain, we are impressed and reassured by his leadership. In his role co-leading our peer support team, we know he is always looking out for and supporting our folks. Thank you very much for twenty years of service to the citizens of Ada County. Thank you also for taking care of our people with such strong leadership and attention to excellent well-being.
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
Yeah.
Is there anyone here from the department, would you speak, and speak for you?
Certainly. Jeremiah, I mean, uh, you know, obviously I've been here with Jeremiah the whole time he's been here, and, uh, uh, I think John said it well in, in, uh, what he wrote, you know, Jeremiah's always been positive. I don't think I've ever seen you even get upset in twenty years. Even when you were the Association President.
That's right.
That, that's a part.
I'll, I'll say that I have, and it's really short-lived.
You have, okay, good.
But, uh, you know, Jeremiah, uh, you know, like, he's taught so many people and, and been a good leader for so many people, and certainly a well-respected, uh, you know, peer support is, uh, one of the functions he's doing now, and, and he's doing great things with that team, and it's something that we, as leaders, don't get a lot of visibility to, because we want that process to remain, you know, between the peer support team and, and those employees. But we know that the employees are well taken care of, and part of that is Jeremiah's leadership. So I just want to thank you very much, Jeremiah, and
Thank you.
Yeah, good job.
Yes, job well done. Thank you. Twenty years, that means you started here in, uh, ninety-five.
Oh, five.
Oh, five?
Yeah.
Twenty. Oh, yeah. Oh, twenty years, that's right. Oh, five, that's right.
I was one year out of high school in ninety-five.
I was gonna say, did you start again? He bet he did.
Jeremiah and I both be retired, yeah.
Alright, well, okay, anybody else want to say anything?
The only thing, only thing I could add to that and what Chief Ryan said was that, uh, when, when, um, emergencies happen, when, especially the big emergencies happen, and I know that Jeremiah is gonna be at one of those, um, places, I know that things are gonna be well han, uh, well-handled, um, that's reassuring to know that things are gonna go well because of his leadership.
Well, great. Well, we appreciate your service to the community, and, uh, I don't know if, if your leaders tell you, but every time we have this meeting, we say, tell your, your staff, we, we, we are happy for them and the work you're doing and, and support of this community. That's, that's really important, yeah.
Well, through my time here, twenty years, I've always felt supported by my department as well as the Commissioners. I have got two kids in college, and they're going to BSU. Do what I need to do as a family, and so it's, it's, it's been, it's been a good career.
Well, great, well, great. Welcome over here and we'll take a picture. We don't have a plaque. For some reason, the plaque wasn't there, but there's usually a plaque. So we'll, we'll take a picture then.
John, I'm gonna do the center since you're the tallest.
Yeah, get your crew up here.
The whole crew.
The property's shortest.
And then
Okay.
Sid standing next to Rod.
Alright.
Everybody step a little bit forward, so we don't have a desk in there. Oh, this is good.
There we go, we got it.
Start our chairs.
He has so many chairs. Alright, here we go. One, two, three, nice, nice, nice. Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service to the community.
Thanks again.
Yeah, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks for the nice words.
Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome to stay, you don't have to.
Yeah, you can sit.
What, what are we doing?
Rest.
It's almost like pre-med for this point of order, depending on how long Chief Blake's, uh,
Uh, Chief Blake, he not, he, he often has drones on.
I said, you knew this going in.
Okay, alright, well, back now, now we're, uh, we're to new business. First item on the agenda is Claims Journal. I'd accept the motion to approve Claims Journal.
I move to approve EMS Claims Journal dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Next up is, uh, a couple of personnel options, uh, one grade step, seven automatic grade step progressions. Is there any question or discussion on Personnel Actions? I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve Personnel Action, EMS Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, uh, now we, the next item is the approval of the minutes. The Minutes of the nine nine twenty-five meeting. Any question, discussion on the minutes? Very none, I'll accept the motion to approve Minutes.
I move to approve EMS Minutes dated nine nine twenty twenty-five and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents.
Okay, um, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Very none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next, an agreement. We have Agreement, uh, Number One Five Zero Five Eight dash four dash two five, Amendment and Renewal Agreement between Ada County Emergency Medical Services District and Resuscitation Quality Improvement for Training. Any questions on the agreement? Very none, I'll accept the motion to approve the agreement.
I move to approve EMS Agreement Number One Five Zero Five Eight dash four dash two five as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents.
So I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now I have EMS update. You got thirty minutes.
I'm gonna give you two minutes. I'll give you back a minute of that. I have two things for you. The first is that, uh, our Hiring Academy is starting next week. It is quite an undertaking, as you may have heard me or Chief Ryan say before. Jeremy's team is in charge of putting that together. Uh, we have a, a fantastic crop of people coming in.
I understand you got a pretty good, pretty good
Just the biggest one?
Uh, probably, it's right up there with one or two, yeah.
It's, it's hard not to get the cream of the crop when your hiring pool is a hundred and sixty or a hundred and seventy people, which is good.
That's good.
The only other thing I have is that, uh, we're rounding out the planning for our fiftieth for the Department Head and Elected Official, uh, Celebration at the beginning of October. And then, uh, planning continues for the Department Celebration for the fiftieth.
Okay, well, great. What about the painting those, those vehicles?
The what?
Painting those vehicles.
Oh, my gosh, okay. I forgot. Uh, the first one's in the back lot. Uh, we're just, uh, I'd say we're inside a week from having that one, uh, spenciled, and the second one, uh, before the end of the fiscal year is in for painting now. Uh, and they look great, they're, I, eye-catching.
Well, good. Well, that was the idea, isn't it?
That is the idea.
And their official color is?
Chartreuse. And I, I'm saying that, uh, our Battalion Chief that handles, uh, vehicles, uh, vehicle acquisitions and specs, uh, hates that, and so that's why I'm saying that.
It is closed.
Yeah, okay. Well, and, uh, we've got somebody going back to inspect the, uh, new ones.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
It's always a lot easier to catch things when it's at the factory as opposed to getting it out here and then having to ship it back to Salt Lake and
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Well, that's good. Well, anything else needs to be brought before the Board?
Not for me.
Nope.
Okay.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank everybody in there.
Tell your staff, we appreciate the service they do to the community.
Will do. Thanks very much.
Alright, we'll be adjourned.